Then those apples will be falling from the trees.
Congratulations. It's nice, yeah. If somebody sees somebody wants in the meeting and I'm not, because that's where my screen, I can't see that, then wave to me and I'll let them in.
All right. Good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. Time for our weekly Cottington County Commissioner Board Meeting. It is Tuesday, July twenty first, two thousand and twenty. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance and Cindy, would you lead us today, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would once again. Let everyone know that if there are individuals who do not care to come up to the commission meeting, and that's fine, they can still call in. The two phone numbers are eight eight two six two four eight and eight eight two six two nine seven. And this would be for items that are not on the agenda, just for our advisement, and that will be done during the open part of the meeting. Also, if you are in attendance, if you would silence your cell phones, please, and we do stream live on YouTube. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Is there any conflict of interest item on the agenda of any commission members?
No.
No.
Very good. Item number four, action to approve the July twenty first agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Waterman, second by Van Duzen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Monthly reports. We will start with the facilities manager, and that would be Steve, if he's ready. Do you want us to start with Rick and then, okay, we'll just hang tight. All right, so how about Rick? We'll maybe call you up first. Good morning, Rick.
No, I had mine laying here. Okay, so you have mine.
Yeah. Yeah, I had mine laying here. It's okay. They're the same. We'll be fine. We got her figured out.
No, I had mine laying on top here, but yeah, I just pulled it down here.
Okay, Rick, take it away.
Okay. Our guys have finished doing the top cut on our asphalt roads. Excuse me. We have some gravel roads that we're probably gonna have to mow because the sweet clover and stuff, there's places it's four feet high. So that will help the blade guys get out and do a little better job. Our mortar grader guys are still working on soft spots on the gravel roads. We still have a lot of spots that will not heal up. We only have one disc, and that's currently up in Florence area. They're working on soft spots to try and get those healed up. The other guys are working on them by theirself. Some of the spots are black, and when it rains like last night, they're greasy. For the most part, the ones they've worked on are hard, but they're slick. And between us working on the spots we're trying to build up, it's hard to get around and get them all gravelled. So just bear with us. We're working on it, but it's a slow process. Then you can't just dump gravel into soft spots because it doesn't work. Most of it just gets eaten away, or then you get a hard spot and then it falls into the soft spot. So we're working on it. We're currently working on a spot on eight one. There's four spots. I brought this to you before, but it's a slow process, trying to build them up, push it out, trying to get some rocks to save it. Between that spot, the spot on ten one, North Henry, and now today being it's wet, there's a spot six miles north of Henry on eight one A. We got it up out of the water, but we can haul there today, being as we can haul pit run to our other spots. So that all comes from town, so that takes a while to get the trucks there. Let's see, guys, we've had a few calls of people losing bales. They usually wind up on the weekends. So somebody gets called in to push bales off the road. Trees, we've been called in to remove some trees that are blocking the road or one lane. The bridge on County Road four four, which is one hundred and fifty ninth street north of town on the Big Sioux River. They started taking the deck off it. By the end of the day, they should have the deck completely off it, and then they'll start pulling the rest of the braces and stuff out because that bridge is gonna be replaced. The road is closed, so people gotta go around that spot. Other than that, we're just trying to get stuff done and work on roads, so it's about all I have for my monthly report.
Yeah, I've received calls too about some of those roads that need to be graded, and hopefully now with this moisture, that will help that process.
Yep, hopefully the, then the wind people, I've been in contact with them, what Brenda's talking about, so they can get more blading. They've hired a local guy to blade some of the roads, especially like in Crown Ridge one where they're, they've taken out some of the approaches and now it's cleanup. And from what I understand, they'll work, start from the north end, work all the way to the south end of the county, and then when he gets to the south end of the county, he'll turn around and start blading the township roads, the county roads, so, and that was a local guy they hired. I do have one more thing on my monthly report that, on the north end of the county, we had road damage from a local construction outfit that hauled rock up into Day County early this spring, and the road was really soft. And we're having a hard time getting that to heal up. There's about six miles there that was hauled on, and the gravel pit is in Grant County, just across the county line. And it gets used, our county roads get used to haul to different places. Some of it probably goes in Cottington County for townships and whatever, but we may have to reduce the speed limit on that or, and maybe the load limit on that if we can't get it to heal up. So there might be a road restriction put on that section of road because it's soft, and then there's black spots on top of it. The motor grader's worked on spots, and he's getting what he can get, but, you know, too much rain. We just, we were doing good, but like I told you guys earlier, that here in town, I've had almost four inches of rain this month, so those places might be a little less, but it's a double-edged sword for moisture, so.
Yeah, you had some pictures of that road of the damage, so it was quite intense, hopefully.
Rick, I have a question. Are you done with your report? I'm sorry. Just a quick question for you. I got a message from someone that was inquiring, they were involved in an accident up on one hundred and fifty, it's Cottington County Road twenty seven and Day County thirteen A, apparently. As soon as you cross is it four hundred and thirty seventh avenue, then you're into Day County, is that right? Or one hundred and fifty fourth?
Hundred and fifty fourth.
Okay, so as soon as you cross one hundred and fifty fourth, then you're into Day County. So it goes from, in Cottington, it's asphalt.
Yep.
It goes to gravel.
Yes.
This person happened to be on a motorcycle and was riding, didn't realize that it was going to become gravel because it wasn't posted that gravel was coming up. Hit the gravel, lost control, wrecked, and was injured. Is there a way, or do we have a sign up there that says gravel approaching, or I just think because we're going from, what is the speed limit on that road?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five miles per hour to hitting gravel on a motorcycle, that's probably not a good thing, so maybe something to take a look at if you're familiar with that intersection. Maybe we can put a gravel ahead sign or something up there.
Gravel ahead or pavement ends or something like that could probably be added to that.
So it turns into gravel when it hits Day County, right? Okay, so just something to take a look at.
Okay. Yep.
It's kind of funny when they, you know, just a few years ago, they came in and redid all the signs. They added so many of those yeah, all of that kind of stuff that they wouldn't have caught that in that process, you know, because they evaluated all of that.
You know, it could be one that got, you know, was taken out by a plow moving snow, or maybe somebody stole it or shot it, or who knows? But there's no sign up there, so just take a look at that.
And when they did the sign, redid all the signs, not all the signs were done. We kind of got the short end of the stick on our signs. We still have signs that we're slowly replacing. There are still wood posts that never were replaced. Still the old signs, so when we come across them, we replace them, so.
I know what it's like to be riding a motorcycle and have that factor kick in of, oh, asphalt's done here, and that's not something that you want to find out at fifty-five miles an hour, so a sign up there would be good.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, well, Rick, I guess we might as well keep you here if you want to just take care of what you have, and then you can be on your way if you want to go. That works. We'll do your budget. Budget, are you, okay, you ready for that?
Yep.
All right. I'll start with that first.
Okay. Four eleven was our salaries. I raised that three percent from what last year was. Everything else pretty much stayed the same because this year's budget with the high water isn't getting it done. We didn't do any chip sealing. All of my budget will go for grade raise, rip rap, us hauling dirt, and the new pipes that will be eventually put in down on County Road seventeen. So everything else is pretty much the same, you know. It, I pretty much just had the same thing, so it didn't not, the only thing that changed was the total amount. I think it went up, oh, what was it, a hundred and like a hundred and forty-two thousand, approximately three percent, because this is the year that we have three motor graders that have to be replaced. And other than that, pretty much I copied last year's budget because we'll have the same amount of miles for chip seal, maybe a little more, maybe a little less next year, but everything else I just left the same, so I didn't have any increase, so.
Yeah, because you can see that in four thirty-four where your road and bridge machinery.
Yeah. It just follows last year's, so, because like I said, that I'm limited. Seven. Yes. Yep, seven-year, seven-year warranty. Yep, yes, they're all seven-year.
But they are staggered.
Yeah, well, there's three this year, and then there'll be two, and I think in four years, something like that. We just got two before rip had left, so. We have five, we have five motor graders. There's one here in town, South Shore, Cranston, Henry, and Florence.
And you don't expect any inspections? We should be all done with those, like with Banner, and do all those inspections?
The, we will have those after they're done.
Okay.
The one on Crown Ridge one, they thought they'd be done up there the middle of August. That was just a rough guess, but they're still hauling gravel from a mile south of South Shore, clear down to the county line and over into Duell County. And so I don't know if we'll be able to have that section inspected.
For the end of the year.
West of there, along County Road seven and four, depending on how things turn out, they should be able to get some of that done. But there's still a lot of work to do in Crown Ridge one.
Right.
And they, the contractor has tried to get asphalt in some of the holes up there on the pavement, and apparently they can't get asphalt until the middle of August.
Yeah.
So that's how far out that is, but they've been trying to maintain the holes. I get a call every once in a while, and Brenda gets some that it's rough, and I call them, and they go up and try and smooth things up. But there's semi after semi after semi going through there, so it's pretty tough to keep those corralled up. Any more questions? Like I said, this pretty much mirrors last year's budget, so.
Personnel, looks like your only adjustment, personnel costs, health insurance and salary.
Yes, that's basically the only things that have changed. I tried to keep it the same except for the motor grader part. That was the only increase that I had, so.
Very good.
Four hundred, four million, eight hundred thousand, seventy-five thousand.
There's several pages for highway.
Yeah, you're not to the end page yet. Yeah, not bad. Yes.
All right. Any other questions for Rick? Okay, how about if we move on to item number eight, action to hire firms to haul rock, pit run, and gravel?
I've been in contact with at least five companies, and the list is going to grow because talking to these guys, say like today, there might be one be able to haul. Tomorrow, there'd be a different one. They've all got projects going on, just like we do, and they've got stuff to do, but I've talked to Tom Laframboys, Rammel Trucking, Jared Shocker, Deutsch Excavating, Neil Jacobson. And I've got other guys that I'm going to talk to, and just, it'll be just adding them to the list, so.
So it could be any one of those at any given time, whoever's available.
And like today, being it rain, they all could haul, who knows? So, because I know, like Rammels, they're, they work for the city, and they've been doing stuff for the wind towers, so wherever they can fill in, and that's what they all said, wherever they can fill in, just give them a call like the day before, and they'll give me a yes or no, and so.
Do you have a set price for?
It'll be the same as what we gave Neil last year, the twenty-eight cents. It just depends, because we've got some rip rap southeast of town that has to go all the way over to Henry, so. Yep, and then we have some here in town, and then we'll probably have to get some more, but, and they were all good with wherever they had to haul from, so. Because like, the other day, where they were hauling, it was twenty-one or twenty-two miles, so with with our guys being gone, and we had five trucks, so we, we need a little help.
Yeah, get caught up with some of that damage and bringing some of them roads out of the water, I guess, it'd be nice.
Yes, and on those, can I add those other trucking firms at any time, or do I have to come every week, or every time I add somebody?
It's just to contract with private firms, so.
We don't have to be specific.
The only question I always have, would have is, do we have to require a certificate of insurance from them?
Yes.
Okay.
And we did that with Neil last year, so before any of them haul, they'll deliver that, or their insurance company will email it to our office.
Okay, yep, that'll cover us there.
Yep.
So the motion would be just to contract with private firms for the hauling of various materials.
All right, got a motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Item number nine, action to apply for grant funding for a bridge project on Fourteenth Avenue Northwest.
Okay, this is the bridge just north of our shop on Fourteenth Avenue below the hill. It currently, it doesn't rank high enough. The scoring isn't high enough for replacement through the big program. And it's slowly deteriorating, so we want to get it on, on the list. But we'll apply for it this year. More likely, we won't get anything, so we'll just keep applying until we get there. But we can get more points through the big program if we up our percentage to put in. You know, one point would be twenty-three percent, ten points would be up to fifty percent for our match, but the wheel tax is another one. If we were maxed out on the wheel tax, that's more way to get points. This is a the hoop shaft to jump through to.
Right.
But and being we have a wheel tax, we do get points for that. There's still a few counties that do not have a wheel tax, but I think Pennington County is one that is working on, they never had a wheel tax before, so they're, they're working on getting one through, but that's, we just need to know what kind of percentage we want to put on there. The minimum is twenty percent, and if that's what you want to start with, you know, so.
That big score, the bridge improvement grant score, they're thirty-one point five one nine. What, what is a good, I mean, what's a good?
Around fifty.
Fifty?
So, you know, and we tried to, that's the bad part about keeping your bridges in good condition. You know, they just had the list come out. One of the counties had nine bridges, but you don't know what kind of condition their bridges are in, and they have a hundred and forty-some bridges in their county, where we have forty-some, you know, so it it all, there's a lot of stuff that goes into it.
Yeah, I talked to a commissioner from Mitchell, and they have some big issues down there with a lot of bridges, and they have a lot of bridges in their county, and it's
Yeah.
We're lucky that we only have what we have because there's only so many dollars that are spread around.
I want to just make sure that I understand that score there that I was referring to. That score, the higher the score, the more likely you are to get the project?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So is there kind of a general cutoff where you're, like, is it fifty-four?
Well, like, some of the bridges that were chosen this year were in the forty-ish, you know, low forties, up to fifty, you know, because it depends whether or not they have a load limit on them. You know, you don't want to get to the stage, if you have a load limit on, that raises your score up, but you don't want to get a load limit because like up here on Fourteenth Avenue, if you put a load limit on, then you push everybody to the south. A lot of them are going to take the first crossing they can cut across. They won't go all the way down to the bypass or two twelve.
That'd be Tenth Avenue.
Yeah. So, you know, and like us, we use the one on Fourteenth Avenue quite a bit. All of our trucks, when we have to go up in the northeast part of the county, even just the plow snow, that's where they go. So we, we'll either have to divert over to County Road thirteen and up and then come back, or they'll have to go down to two twelve and around, and so.
I'll make a motion to apply for a grant for the funding on the bridge on Fourteenth Avenue.
What percent match?
And you want me to include the match in the motion?
We can, we can start off with the twenty, if that's what you want to do, and
All right, we'll start off with the twenty.
So.
And this is, this is actually, the motion would be actually to approve a resolution authorizing submission of applications.
So what is the twenty?
What's the twenty percent match?
It would be eighty-four thousand, some odd dollars.
And the twenty percent of being included in the resolution.
Eighty-four, seven hundred.
Yeah.
So this is our share, eighty-four thousand, or that's?
Yes, that'd be our share, yeah. No, because the bridge up here on Fourteenth Avenue could cost close to two million dollars to replace it. And part of that, it's in the FEMA flood plain, so everything costs more money. And it's, it's a, it's a big bridge, and it's five thousand cars a day go over that bridge, so it's yeah, it's an important artery for us and the city, so.
Sometimes when you do the preliminary studies, they take that into account too on your credits, right?
Yeah.
What would you say are the most important criteria? Like, is it the condition of the bridge or the age?
Well, even some of the bridges that are old are in really good shape.
Okay.
But, you know, damage, you know, that one has a little damage underneath from ice because part of that's wood underneath there, so, you know.
Okay.
I think one of the pilings has some damage on it, possibly some rotting on it. Mark Younger does our bridge inspection through Banner, and when he, he's already done the bridge inspection for this year, and he's still doing other bridge inspections for other counties. He will come, that's something new this year. He'll come and give us a small presentation on what he's done, so.
That bridge is very important. That was, even in the flood of ninety-seven, that was one of the few bridges that remained open because it was structurally sound.
Absolutely.
To get from east to west through the city. The other one was two twelve, but all the other ones were closed, so. You know, that's, that one's gonna take all the ice, the big ice chunks as they come down.
Yeah, because there's a lot of, lot of ground between there and County Road thirteen. And next year, that one will probably get added to the list, so.
Yeah.
We've got some big bridges that are in repair, need repair or replaced, I should say.
What's the timeframe from start to finish for a bridge? Is that about ten years?
It just depends. Could be, you know, in that five to ten years, and like I said, it depends on the load restriction part, you know. So if it would get load restricted, that would bump it up.
What's the lifespan of a bridge?
There again. Yeah. You know, because there's bridges that are almost eighty, hundred years old. There's one in the south end of the county. You know, that one's almost a hundred years old, but that one's got load restrictions on it, so.
I was gonna say, I've got one in my area that has a load restriction, so.
Yeah.
Two questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So, one is, how critical do you think this bridge is? I mean, I know the inspection's gonna reveal that is, but in other words, if we, are we just, we want to be thinking about and trying to do this? But say, how many years of not getting a big grant might this be, where things might become like, hey, we need to take care of this and think about?
Within the next ten years.
Okay, so.
That's why we're starting it now.
Right, okay.
Like Charlie said, you know, it could take up to ten years to get it replaced, so.
And then you said if you add, say we go to twenty-three percent match, how many points?
There's one point.
That's one point.
One point.
Twenty-three is one point, twenty-six is two points, twenty-nine is three points, thirty-two is four points, thirty-five is five points, thirty-eight is six, forty-one is seven, forty-four is eight, forty-seven is nine, and fifty is ten, so. thirty-five is five points, thirty-eight is six, forty-one is seven, forty-four is eight, forty-seven is nine, and fifty is ten, so. Yeah, you know, that that raises. Yeah, that raises the price the county has to pay, so.
Okay.
So we can start with this and as things progress and if we don't get approval, then we may need to seriously think about.
Basically, basically, Rick, a million dollar bridge at twenty percent would cost us two hundred thousand dollars. But at fifty percent, it would cost three hundred thousand or two and a half times.
Yeah, and that's.
Or one and a half times.
And that's what's going on up on County Road four right now. That's almost a million dollar bridge and we're going to have to pay, I think, a hundred and eighty-six thousand right in there, so.
And if we wanted to bear the total cost, we could do it.
Oh, yeah, we could, we could bear the total cost, but that's.
No, let's not do that.
So, yeah, yeah.
I would put it to the top of the list.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, good job on the foresight with that, getting it going. I mean, you hate to find out that we need to replace a bridge when the time comes.
Yeah, and that's, that's why all the bridges get inspected every two years.
Yeah.
So.
So we. County Road four, you know, they've got the road closed up there, which is for some people, but not a lot. You pull, uh, Fourteenth Avenue to replace a bridge, it's going to pack the log.
Oh, yeah.
Well, like I said, there's five thousand cars a day that go over that, you know. It wouldn't, when you go through there, you notice there's traffic. But when you think about five thousand cars a day, that's, that's a lot of, a lot of people you're sending somewhere else, so.
Presently, we have two dollars on our wheel tax up to four, is it?
Yeah, I, I think that's the way it is. I think the max they pay is eight.
Oh, alright, yeah, yes, yes.
So there's something you can do with that, obviously. I mean, that's not what I'm thinking, but there's, there's a way about, I gotta think about this. We'll talk sometime, I heard.
Okay.
Well, if you want to raise wheel tax, you probably better find someone to protect you because.
Yeah, no, no, it's a, it's a different way you can go about it that's, anyway, yeah. Uh, I'll rethink how that was explained to me once. No, that isn't what I'm thinking because I realize that that is, I mean, it's been tried before and.
Yeah, and like right now, the way things are, that's not.
No, that isn't anything that I have in mind. I'm just saying that is another criteria that they do take into, uh, to factor that out, so.
Yeah.
Shouldn't even say that word.
I have a motion, but I did not catch who made the second.
I made a second earlier, but then Myron amended it, so I would.
Well, no, within the body, within the body of the resolution, the twenty percent. Yeah, that's part of the res- yeah.
So.
Do we need to know a dollar amount on that, Cindy, for the resolution or just twenty percent's good enough?
I think it would, it was that.
Eighty-four seven.
Eighty-four, yes.
Oh, is that, is that the twenty percent?
Yeah, that was the twenty.
I get it.
Yep, the eighty-four thousand seven hundred dollars, yes.
Is okay.
Let's see.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Uh, item number ten, action to hire temporary employee for highway department to drive truck, run a tractor, mow roads.
This has to do with what we're doing this year, trying to catch up. And with guys going on vacation or they're sick. We've had one guy that his daughter-in-law has cancer, so he has to watch his grandkids. So he's taking vacation time to do that. This would just be a floater. He could, he's going to have to have a CDL for one, to drive truck. If we need him to mow, he can mow, you know, whatever, just to help out. Run the disc one day or whatever we can have him do, so.
Temporary help.
It's temporary help. Some weeks he may work forty hours, some weeks he may work twenty, some weeks he may not work any, so.
How long is this position going to be? Do we have an idea?
Well, that's what I was wondering, like, you could probably use him during the winter as well when you have a snowstorm or not necessarily.
Well, we possibly could, but we'll just go until.
It's not really a temporary employee, though, if we have anticipation of keeping him on.
Well, it'd be until freeze out probably, you know, depending. Yeah, that and like I said, he'd, he'd be driving truck. Like last week, we had two guys that took Thursday off, so it left us with five trucks and we had a long haul, so.
Well, I wouldn't.
Stick them in a truck.
Would this temporary employee be eligible for benefits then?
No.
No, it just, okay.
Nope.
And is there a time period that he would have to be temporary? And after that time period, would it be considered something else?
Well, he'd have, Rick will have to submit a personnel change form when he has his person lined up. And it will have to note on personnel change form that this is a temporary position.
Yeah, but that's, that's all I'm looking for right now.
Sure.
Is just a temporary position to throw somebody in the truck and.
Yeah, we, we.
Do whatever needs to be done.
He'll be covered under working comp, but he won't get other benefits.
Our sympathies go forward to these people that are having these difficulties. And I just was asking about the time period.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the position and in fact, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it. But where's the, the funds coming from for this position? Are they coming out of your budget?
That comes out of my budget because I've got temporary, part-time temporary help. And I've alr- I've already have a guy that mows and this month he's only mowed, he's only been here like thirteen hours, so.
Okay.
He's, his wife has some health issues, so he's had to take time, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve a temporary employee for the highway department to assist with tasks as directed by Rick. And I don't know if I need to add a cutoff date on that motion of like November first or just at your discretion.
Yeah, that's, when we, we get caught up, it'll be done, so.
That's my motion.
So again, second by Gable, I think he said that.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need to set a?
Discussion?
Do we need to set a salary rate or?
That'll come on personnel change form.
Alright. Thanks, Rick.
Okay, I have one question for you, Cindy. Will he have to start on the first?
No.
Anything?
Nope, no, because he's temporary and doesn't have benefits, there's no, no restrictions.
Same as we do out at Memorial Park, we have temporary summertime help. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries, alright.
Thank you.
I think we can let you go.
Yeah, thanks, Rick.
Alright, so we'll back up then to monthly reports with facility manager and we'll call Steve forward.
Good morning to everybody.
Morning.
Oh, this is a lot of list.
We got a lot going on. We have a lot of different departments.
Okay, why don't I start out with the courthouse? Um, in the courthouse, the sprinkler system is completely finished. Um, had, um, the, they came in this past, last week and installed all the wiring for the bells on the sprinkler system that is completed now. And also Safe and Secure came in, made a connection to the ABC control panel for in case there's a fire system. Um, when it sets it off, the doors can be unlocked for the fire department to be able to enter. And so that, that has been completed. Um, there is a hole that is in the parking lot, a small hole that, and it was coned off for a little bit. Right now, there is some, uh, uh, re-ground that is put in the hole. When Rick has time, when it's some rainy days, that he can't be able to haul and do some of that stuff. He said they'll come up, they'll cut that chunk out, fill it in and then put some asphalt back in there again. Um, and also, there is a chunk of asphalt in the back door entrance that is out in one corner. It's kind of a trip hazard. So what I have done is I have lined up to turn around and have that removed and have that area removed and have, um, actually cement concrete pad foot there. Um, and so that, that will be, try to be lined up to be done on a Friday. So it can be done over the weekend, so it can be back and opened up.
And it's to comply with, um.
With.
ADA.
Yes, yes, with ADA.
What they, what they did previously was they just laid a slab of.
Of asphalt.
Asphalt up to the concrete and it's falling apart. We're going to get sued.
Well, let's, let's not. Do we need to?
We're meeting with our, our safety benefits.
Or something right now to make sure nobody.
We'll have to turn around and put some marker until we have some paint right now.
Right away.
Yep. Well. It, it, it was temporary foot there and so we had to put on top and it's breaking away from the asphalt underneath and stuff, so. Or the concrete separating and.
Not to rush you, but can we get that done today, coned and so nobody sees us now?
Yeah.
It'd probably be my employees because they're the ones that have to go out to get the mail every day and.
We don't want anybody getting hurt.
Majority of the traffic flow there is from the sheriff's office. It's not basically the main traffic, but yeah. Um, egg building, um, Ron Hartley, employee, temporary employee, had started on July thirteenth. Um, he is now filling in, trying to get learned some of the stuff there. Um, he, it can out because I have some of the staff is, one of them is on vacation now. So he's kind of filling in that spot. Um, events right now, it's kind of slow out there. Um, they'll be setting up for achievement days here that's coming this next week and stuff, so. Um, um, we'll go to the park. Um, the park, um, has been full pretty well every weekend since Memorial Day. Um, it, we've had some branches, tree damage from every windstorm that comes through. I called this morning to ask if there was anything this morning and he says, nope, we just got rain luckily this time, so.
Good.
We didn't receive reimbursement from our insurance company for over twelve thousand dollars for the damages incurred on this.
On June fourth.
Storm to different buildings, hail damage and siding damage and.
Yeah, and there's going to be some.
We have submitted a claim and reimbursed.
The, I know the house, um, their shingles are starting to blow and fly off. And that was budgeted to be, um, re-roofed this year. So I'm going to, we're going to try to get some of those things, um, fixed. There was a little bit of damage on the siding of the house from trees and hail and so we had that, that hit the siding. It was a, it's a final siding, so it's some of those things repaired.
In our city, we're, we're, we're not, we're not responsible, are we?
Well, that's an act of God cause, but we did have a claim of a camper and so we had that, uh, had received some damage from after the storm, stuff that was hanging up there and it fell down. The insurance company got ahold of me yesterday and they says that that will qualify to be, and I think it's like a seven or nine hundred dollar claim on a camper.
Brought me up to, to a point that I was going to make and, and that's, are we going through the park making sure that we don't have those things that are just hanging there?
And, and that's the difficult thing is getting, getting somebody out there to get it.
Right.
Because they've been so busy swamped.
I mean, in that case, the city park, had that guy been in his camper, he would have probably been killed.
Right, yeah.
Want that happening. We have a lot of big old ash trees at Memorial Park, so.
Hopefully, the winds have kind of taken care of all the, all the stuff that's been getting old and damaged.
The hardy ones that are left, right?
Hopefully, um.
Lot of the tree individuals are, you know, doing some of the work for that beetle in, in preparation to.
Right.
Try to keep that from happening.
Um, to give you some stats and so we had on the park of compared to last year. Um, last year, there was, as of yesterday, or as of the date of yesterday, there was eleven hundred and sixty, um, people that had, um, booked or, and so we had at the park last year, this year is thirteen hundred and forty-three. So it's up, you know, a hundred and some, nearly two hundred, and so we had more. And, um, this might be kind of a rough deal, but last year's revenue at the time, um, was eighty-two hundred. Uh, just to hear, a little bit over. This year, it is one hundred and fifteen and a half thousand of, of revenue generated already at the park this year.
Did our rates increase from last year to this year?
There was a rate increase from last year and so we had, it was, I think, like a dollar more or so, or nineteen, so we had, but yeah. Which is going to make a little bit, you know, and so we had, like I said, you have to keep in respect of some of the things. Um, some of this could be revenue also figured too because of, of, everybody has to pay upfront and some of this stuff would be collected from last year of, of just reservations too, so.
People want to get out and camp.
People want to get out and camp, yes.
Waiting list, I believe.
There, there is a waiting list, especially on the main, major holidays. Um, there's a waiting list for full-time spots, but we have to limit the full-time spots to let families and, and weekend people get a little joy too, so.
Yep.
I mean, we could fill half the park if we want to be full-time.
I have a question for you, since we're talking about Memorial Park. The, uh, the boat dock area right there is in pretty rough shape.
Yes.
Who maintains that?
Um, I'm not exactly for sure if Game Fish does the, 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 that there, but well.
Game Fish does the dock.
Does the dock area, but I think, uh, we do on this. Um, Rick had gone out to go and turn around, he was going to bring some fill out just to fill one of those holes that are there. But yeah, there's some holes, stuff that needs to be patched.
A complaint from a boater that was out there and that's something I think we as a commission need to address before too.
Right, yeah, there is, there is one hole there that when you come up that, that needs to get filled. Rick was going to turn around and bring some re-ground off there so we can get that at least hole filled and so we had, so, yeah. Um, the weed department, um, last week Tuesday, had a weed board meeting. Primarily weed board meeting, kind of more or less reviewed a little bit of the budget. Uh, but also we had some weed complaints, so we had to have a weed board meeting put together on the weed complaints. Um, so far that the one especially has been taken care of and so we had, and hopefully.
Did they get it sprayed?
They did get it sprayed, so. And, but, uh, otherwise weed spraying is pretty well wrapped up. Um, there might be some spots out there. We have a, uh, a twenty-five gallon tank that we got in the truck. When we're out, when they're out doing some weed surveillances or complaints and so we had, if they see something, they're going to spray it as long as it's, you know, not being hated already and all that stuff, so. Um, also today, um, is recycling, container recycling goes on till one o'clock today. So if somebody has some, um, recycled jugs of chemical, they can, or I guess of the empty jugs. Yep.
And that's just chemicals.
That's just chemicals, yep. Okay.
How many people actually show up and do that?
Um, there's two guys from Department Egg that can't come, so then we have my staff helps assist because there's sometimes, it can depend. Sometimes there, people will bring in a whole horse trailer full. Or sometimes there might be like an elevator might bring in a big, a big dump truck full, so it can vary. I mean, last year was kind of slow. This year could be, you know, a whole lot more and stuff, so.
Is that on the same date every year or?
Um, no, it's usually on a Tuesday, but this year we are a little bit further behind. They rescheduled it for a different area. Usually, it's always the, the second Tuesday of, uh, July. But this year, um, just because of, of scheduling, they had to reschedule and stuff, so. But it's usually always in July, we always get head. Um, detention center, um, I was notified by Matt and the staff that there's a water heater that has start, was started to leak last week. Um, and they came in and there's actually three water heaters in there. Um, one of them is leaking, the other one is starting to leak. These water heaters were put in in two thousand and eight.
They're brand new.
Yeah, they're brand new. Um, they ended up turning around and got a quote, a quick quote from it. And I know we'll have to submit, but just to give you heads up on this, that, that, of course, the third water heater that is not leaking is the furthest back behind and if that one goes, they have to take the other two away, just the kit. And it was asked and so we had if we could be able to, to replace. And the new water heaters that would be recovery time will be a lot faster, double the recovery time on the newer ones. Um, uh, this, they do have money in the budget for, for. This, they do have money in the budget for for repairs and so they have plenty of money in there, they're something like thirty percent, I believe, at their budget right now, so I mean, they kind of he kind of asked if I could approach you guys. Replacement for all, yeah, for all three. They have to actually connect into another panel electrical because it's they're maxed out right now and these heaters currently had the time and so that, so.
What's the cost on?
Cost of the heaters is eight thousand thirty-five and the electrical estimate is five thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So they're gonna, what they do is they're gonna have to take and supply into another panel because right now the hundred amp panel that they have in there is not equivalent enough, so they're going to tap into another one and then run new wires.
That's for all three heaters.
Yes.
Question, were they all two thousand eights?
All two thousand eights, in fact, the last one of the, there's three of them, two of them were put in at the same time, two months later, another one was put in installed, so. It's all going to just trickle itself.
Yeah, if we keep the one that was still working up to the front, but then it's probably just.
It's just a matter of time.
So we're looking at a total of thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars?
Yep.
Those in like the marathons.
Oh, yeah, they're not, but they're a hundred and twenty gallon heaters each. Each one is a hundred and twenty gallon heater, I had said something about marathons and no, they're not marathon and I don't know if they could be able to keep up the equivalently, I guess. Because right now recovery is like twenty gallon or twenty gallon, I believe what he told me was twenty gallons per hour at a hundred and twenty. The new ones will be forty gallons per hour each, so it'd be double the recovery time.
It'll be more efficient.
More efficient. They had looked at also about doing, you know, I I had made a comment, what about the on-demand ones, I think that's close to twenty thousand by the time you put in there. And then, of course, we have the boilers, the and I guess a while back they looked into that, but the duct though, they have to plum in the natural gas line and then they got to have an exhaust. It was close to over twenty grand just to turn around and tap into the boilers too, so.
This is the most efficient route.
This is the most efficient and and least cost route, yes.
So do we get a trade-in for the one that isn't?
I don't know, do you want it? You want to supply your garage?
No guarantees.
No guarantees, and also are only a six-year, six-year lifetime warranty on them, so.
So that's a.
Your lifetime warranty, that's a life.
Yeah, well, yeah, life expectancy, I shouldn't say lifetime, it's six-year warranty is what it is on there.
I'll take that as a no then.
I guess if you want to have that extra one put in your garage, go right in.
Just take the door open, they'll roll it right in the door.
So you got all your reports done, you want to move on to budget?
Yep, yes, we'll move on to budgets.
Right. It's under government buildings.
All right. Yep, we'll start out with government buildings. You know, of course, me being on the first year, you don't know exactly all the all the things about everything that needs to go on around here. But I guess on the, I'll start out with the with the salaries. Salary was only increased a little bit because taking away putting mine in place of Milo's and with the staff, it doesn't raise it that much. I did reflect on the health insurance increase, potentially increase and stuff, so that end up turn around, it was on what, not even not even eleven thousand, nine thousand dollars a little bit from last year's on the salary. Probably go down, increased a little bit on the insurance. The repairs had done a little bit increased, I kind of reflected of the past on on the on it for for at this time of the of the repairs. Also did the same with the supplies, kind of reflected of what the past history on the on the supplies were. Pretty well, some of this stuff kind of coincides pretty close to everything else. I'll get down to one of the things that I have is the bud in the in the building improvements. Milo had turned around and had for this parking lot in the back, I know that I believe sometime across the street, I kind of heard rumor that it got purchased. I don't know for sure, they heard that there's a possibility of a maybe of a building to go up there. Sean, I got some stuff in the past, up to the west. Sean, I got some stuff here just recently in the last week, so. But but I stuck it in there to keep for the potential of 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 the expansion of the parking lot and so we had in in there. Plus also one of the things that was is asked and more or less in in the building here to complete the security fog system up into the the next two two levels. I might turn around and try to request to do that this year. There is money in the budget, of course, for for some of this stuff if we don't with the expansion of the parking lot. Parking lot probably would not be a good thing right now at this present time with stuff. I would suggest then to complete the security fog systems in the remaining offices up up above. And I did get an estimate of about twenty-three thousand to complete that process.
Something else, you know, that we kind of talked about is doing, you know, checking the grade of our building to help put the moisture in the basement.
Right, I'll have to, yeah, we'll have to get these things checked out for around the perimeter. Yeah, I suppose it's, you know, this here landscaping has been done, it's going to be majority of it's going to be on the east, east side of course.
I know that they're landscaping, but we have an issue over there.
Okay, all right.
You know, when we were talking about, I should have did this before, but I thought that there was something done of of the different facilities to be proactive, you know, like with these water heaters, like what's the lifespan of? Yeah, so.
Yeah, I have to check into that, yeah.
Because I thought that there was something done quite a while ago that would kind of help us with some of this.
Thanks, thanks for mentioning it, because I had that same question in the past, but I mean, we we bought that software, it tracks work orders.
Yep.
And I was still using it for work orders.
Well, yeah, we are using it for work orders, yep, yep.
And then it at some point, I thought we had a survey of all, you know, to get a status and all this stuff, you know.
I will, I'll check into that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not aware of everything that was done on that.
This is what triggered it, is this water heater that I thought there was something, as long as we, there was something done to help us with.
All right, I'll I'll look into that.
You know, say this life expectancy of this, you know.
Anyway.
Okay, thanks, I'll be, I'll look into that and so that, so. But overall, I mean, below and so we had the debt and principal, there's nothing added on because of course last year that all had gotten pretty well, had had been paid off.
The lease bill.
Yep.
Contract we entered into fifteen years ago. Nice.
So overall, it actually turned around and reduced the budget by a hundred and almost a hundred and twenty thousand. And so for the, you know, hopefully it don't kick me in the butt because I'm not familiar with everything on this thing, so. I know my weed department, but.
A new charter.
It may be just on that, it might be good to take a a look at that facility to see if there's something in there.
I know there was somewhere that.
All right, that was the idea, yep, to keep a head of some of that. You calling or you calling?
Sorry.
I think you tapped it with your corner ear. All right, egg building, egg building, and so because of one employee going to be gone for a majority of the year, I kind of adjusted on on with for the temporary help.
What what's what's the name of that budget so I can find?
It's egg building and I don't know what. It had page fifty-two on this.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-two and fifty-three, I believe.
The activity number is five twenty-three.
All right, with the wages, it actually had a little slight decrease because of the adjustment for the for the one employee that will be gone in the temporary to fill in. The the probably the biggest, it still was up just slightly a little bit just because of the adjustment for the for the health insurance, potential health insurance. A couple other reflects, I increased from last year because of the building insurance. It I've noticed that the building insurance is significantly has has increased.
It's going to do that again.
And it's going to do that again, okay. So pretty well that and then, of course, again, I reflected off the repairs and so that had been in past history. And pretty well did the same kind of more or less all the way across, like with the government buildings, kind of reflected of past history, not knowing everything that goes on with with the whole all out there except for, I mean, I did keep the building outline because there's the for redoing the bathrooms in the kitchen of projected items, I'd gotten some quotes on the flooring for doing some of the flooring in there. Some of the flooring in there is potentially asbestos, so it needs to be replaced in time and and stuff. One thing and stuff, I did meet with Chuck Wagner at for out in the egg building, they are looking at to help us help assist with more additional electrical stuff or the functions for the farm show and for the Jordan Mack events, because there's not enough, not enough electrical boxes and outlets for all the cattle stuff that goes on and achievement days also. One of the things that was approached to me and so that by Jamie was we had the core engineer came in and they evaluated for a hospital there. The hospital, well, they, the core engineers denied the building facility primarily because there's no sprinkler system in the building. And so that is a potential thing, we, he is going to check into, see about for for actually adding that on, I think he's going to talk to First District, I think is what he was going to do and see about potentially even probably this year, try to get get that put in and get that underneath the COVID.
The CARES Act.
The CARES Act deal, so. And that would be a big beneficial for the egg building for a sprinkler system. It's quite a big facility of not having those safeguards in there. And so, so.
I have a question on four twenty-six point two zero egg building uniforms. Yeah, it was six hundred, it was nine hundred, then it went to six hundred and now it's back up to nine hundred, what world does?
The reason for it is is because they still have the maintenance staff there, I'll have the temporary staff be.
But do they have uniforms out there?
What they have is what they have is they have a shirt that has emblem and then then generally a black.
They are, they are provided a uniform allowance with January payroll feature, yes, yep, they are included in that.
So all I needed to know.
Yep. So overall, and so we had, it's down about close to five thousand dollars on that budget and so we had.
So do you have some funding in here, you know, if the egg committee decides to go forward with that?
You know, and that's that's the issue, he comes and approaches after it was all submitted. So if I have to, I'd have to turn around and kind of leave one of the other projects out is what I'd have.
For?
For the electrical. The electrical in the barn was already estimated to be close to almost eighteen thousand to have all electrical done on the barn.
I will tell you, I don't, I think you need to increase your insurance.
It it's probably not quite enough yet.
From what I've heard, a twenty percent increase.
Wow.
Property insurance due to events across the nation that are driving everything up.
Okay.
And we can still do this because we don't finalize it.
Right, all right. Yep, I I will. Yep, that sounds like. I kind of, I was kind of nervous, especially when I did the last report seeing like, wow.
Probably having another egg committee meeting coming up here the first part of August, they might have more information.
Okay.
So all of our buildings are going to need to be looked at for insurance purposes.
Okay. Okay, any questions on that one? County park. There are wage, some of the wages, but of course I took some of the other things because there's no, there was last year, there was some submitted of some health insurance and everything. Milo had it to have one of the temporary helps be a full-time with benefits. I took those away, overall budget was actually gets about three hundred dollars less on the on the personal service item. I did increase the the that one, I did actually increase the building one, we might have to look at that one too also, Cindy. I did, it's almost doubled to what it was proposed last year, but yet, as you can see, what was spent already.
Yeah.
It's it's close.
It's.
I'm sorry.
On on the insurance. Oh, which one?
Four twenty-one, no, that line, the line.
Four fifteen.
Four fifteen, okay.
No, that's.
Four fifteen, that's employee.
That's employee health.
Four twenty-one is the line.
Four twenty-one we're talking about is about the building insurance, property insurance. In respects, I kind of more or less, I guess, basically pull off a history to reflect what the budget for and on on all these other items for like supplies and and utilities. Which end up for because of the insurance and everything, actually increased that line item quite a bit. Building outlay, it was to turn around and actually to do some for the building outlay, it's to do more improvements on the buildings to do the more completion on floors and the bathhouses and 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 more roofing. One thing I did add in there on the machinery, it is the the mower. The mowers are already, I think the oldest one is or the newest one is like four years old already, they put on nearly over a hundred hours for more out there each month.
Month.
Month, yeah.
You got about five hundred dollars a year on.
Yes, so I mean, that's considerably enough, but it's one thing, I think it's the the oldest machine, I think it's got over, I think they said over a thousand some hours or better on it. So it, yeah, this thing needs to be projected every few years to replace, to replace one.
Do that or else we just buy a bunch of goats.
Cindy, I had this conversation with you last week and it surprised a person that I was talking to, they actually asked what the income to expense ratio was at Memorial Park and I think that they were surprised to find out that the park is not a moneymaker for the county.
Never has, never has been.
With that in mind, can you tell me what on average the park does make out there? Do you have that number handy? I'm just curious because now we got, now we got the budget request for this next year for twenty twenty-one, I'm just. A graph, yeah.
I could probably just about guess what.
Well, I know, I know, looking at the history, it's really increased in the last few years, I mean.
Definitely, yeah.
Definitely has increased.
It's gotten better, we say it's full.
Has increased also.
Exactly.
Building, the infrastructure needs attention annually.
The one thing, you know, if you could turn around and have the park just to be the camp only, you know, and have those just those facilities, it would be really good, but there's a lot of buildings out there and the infrastructure is, it needs upkeep and the revenue off each one of them buildings does not offset.
It's two hundred nineteen, three ninety-two, if we got two hundred thousand, I'd be tickled, thank.
All right, the camping fees in two thousand, let's see, my revenue report starts with the year two thousand seventeen, camping fees we collected were just over a hundred and ten thousand. Two thousand eighteen, it was just over a hundred and twenty-three thousand and in two thousand nineteen, it was just over a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Building rentals, twenty-seven hundred in two thousand seventeen, thirty-nine hundred in eighteen, thirty-five hundred in nineteen. And then we have wood sales, which went from twenty-seven hundred to thirty-three hundred to forty-one hundred. So you can see that our occupancy basically is up, which is driving those wood sales. And then if you look at the expenditure side of it. If Lee could scroll to the. if Lee could scroll to the final page, you can see our expenditures. Um, two thousand seventeen, one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty eight thousand, two hundred and twelve thousand. So you can compare those to the revenues.
Oh, yeah, okay. Is it? I just wonder if there's a way to break up because there's the the non camping part, you know, just just a part, you know, the park part and then the you know, cause then you had a better.
The only way that you're gonna do that, it would basically be is it rental of.
The building rentals, which are.
Which still yet reflect people that still camp there also. I mean, because there's always a lot of times reunions
Yep.
is what occurs. So there's people, there might be five, six people or dozen people that are camping because of the reunion.
Yeah, it's uh but. And also the figures don't increase now that we've got our don't reflect that we're collecting all the money upfront.
You know, and that's, you know, there's some of it that.
It might take a couple of years for that.
Right, to 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 evil, you know, basically see itself out on that.
This year, the building rentals, I'm sure are gonna be down. There probably has been.
There's been some cancellations. I don't remember. I think I I probably turned on did at least eight or ten cancellations for buildings and so at rental, so because of the COVID.
Just wall park, imagine we lose twenty five, thirty thousand dollars here.
Right.
That's twenty five to thirty thousand.
But it but it also it reflects service because of what it does. It brings people into the community.
Yeah.
And they still spend.
Dollars spent elsewhere.
Dollars, yeah, not just right here.
Well, it's definitely a vital resource for the county. Yeah, I'm not disputing that. I just wanted people to know that it's not a revenue maker.
No.
I doubt if you could find a campground in the state that's a revenue maker.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So reflect overall, it actually is an increase of uh of close to twenty thousand for for next year compared to this past year.
Buildings are our biggest drawback.
Buildings and stuff and and they they're they're, you know, roads and so there's roads that that looks tough.
You know, a question that someone asked me is the Girl Scouts, do they ever use that building?
Maybe once a year.
You know, that's a.
Maybe once a year. My understanding and they're supposed to let them know when they come in, but I my understanding last year, they just showed up. And that's basically that's what they do is they just show up. Building. Not, no, that is their facility.
We're not to rent it out.
No.
We don't have maintenance on it either, do we?
No, no, and that is getting in tough shape. There's been discussion. I had a conversation back when I first got here. Talked to the gentleman, so they had about the building. They didn't know exactly what they were gonna do and.
It's not quite to the position where we gotta put a yellow ribbon around it.
No, and stuff.
Okay. And the wind always blows out the west. We need a south wind.
Well, there has been a couple of them because there's been enough south wind that the shingles keep flying off the house. All right, we'll go to the the weed budget. Um, page fifty eight and fifty nine, I don't know. Activity is six fifteen.
Yes.
This one here, of course, I took my wages out, um took my wages out, added a little bit for my staff a little bit because they're gonna be a little they'll be needing a little bit more, but overall on the wage end of things, um pretty well dropped it close to what forty five, forty six thousands of add on on that budget item. Um, reflect everything else. Um I would probably imagine I might have to adjust. I've been pretty good with the actually the insurance out there on that facility.
That one looks, I think I checked it yesterday and that one I think you're okay.
Yeah, I kind of been keeping cushion on that because of the past how and I thought, well, if it goes up certain percentage.
Well, this also includes uh vehicle.
Yes, this is vehicle insurances and everything, yeah.
So um that one, I think I I checked yesterday and I thought you were pretty close or a lot in a lot better shape.
The professional services, of course, is my data logger systems of that and with the add on of the extra one and so they had increased that a little bit. Um, the other thing is is a little bit more for publishing is we had to get a little more for possibly help with some advertisement stuff going out. And generally supplies, I dropped that a little bit because we've been using less and less chemical for usage for just, you know, mostly spot spraying. And pretty well, things pretty well stay pretty from there all the way across the same. Um, on the machinery and the equipment kind of thing is to turn around and of course is to increase or um uh to replace the injecting systems, so they had to upgrade it for the ones because of their getting out there. It's more or less, you can't find parts anymore for for it's unbelievable how that kind of technology only lasts about five to eight years and it's already outdated. It's like computers. So overall, on stuff, it's down close to fifty two thousand or fifty, yeah, almost fifty two thousand for the for the weed budget.
I I did the smallest item on the budget. Item four twenty four, weed control rentals, hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, that is in case, oh, for instance, I end up turning around and I'll get the I'll rent a a high parcer, um steam Jenny.
Okay.
It's things like that, or if I have to go in before I once in a while had to get a a a cart to tote tote the the pellets around. Of course, now I purchased one in here a few years ago, so that's why that's that's in there. It's a cover, you know, for cleaning the trucks.
That's really miscellaneous.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's what that rental more or less consists of.
Right.
All right. West Nile, um in the West Nile budget, I kind of took away half of the wages deal. Um, pretty well. Nothing's ever been done for hiring somebody to do that. I'm gonna keep that in in case all of a sudden I just wanna have somebody just go in. Um, just to maybe to alone, just to fog mosquitoes in the evenings to get away from having staff. Sometimes when we're fogging, we're spraying, um it ends up being you're out till midnight, one o'clock and then you're back back at the shop at five, six o'clock in the morning and it gets to be a very short night. So I'm just gonna keep that in there in case I do need to get somebody for just the fog alone. Um, pretty well, everything else stays somewhat the same. The supplies went up just because of the of the past history plus also um need to purchase stuff. Um, some of this stuff gets actually reimbursed. Some of it is 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 through doing different communities and so that, but the increase of of usage of fogging has increased the supplies, the purchase for that and so for for doing that. So overall budget actually relatively is it's a little bit increased just because of the increase of the supplies.
Thirty eight dollars.
Yep.
Where uh what's life expect to see of a fogging machine?
Um, it just depends on how many hours. Right now, there's five hundred and some hours on that machine. It was purchased, I believe, in two thousand and thirteen. We don't put a lot of hours on it, maybe a hundred hours right now a year. For a while there, city actually was utilizing it quite a bit um my first few years. Um, and then city ended purchasing a couple more units. So now they don't they don't uh utilize our machine and they, when they did, they would do the maintenance on the machine. They would change oil and everything and and keep that up.
You're selling the traps out, don't you?
We still have the traps out, yep.
Uh, that might pick up now with all the rain that we've had.
This might pick up now with the rain. Um, I have to um comment, we went last week out. They went last week out to go collect the traps. Um, we have a trap, a whole complete trap in um uh CO2 and the battery.
Missing.
Missing over in.
Really?
You you haven't found it yet.
Well, I haven't found it yet. So um I had the guys go when they went to collect, I needed, I wanted to get them all the numbers off the tanks. So we can go to the providers in town to see if somebody brings in the CO2 tanks and stuff, so.
Well, you folks, yeah, be be on the lookout for a.
Yeah.
Mosquito trap. The best thing to do is to buy a big one of those big bug zappers and give it to your neighbors.
Well, I don't know if they think, I don't know if they think that's what this does, but I have a feeling somebody probably turned around and spotted it. So they took everything and of course, it's a six volt battery, which they could put in their golf cart or the CO2 tank. Maybe they have their own um um beer container and so they had.
We find you, you will be prosecuted.
Yes.
Or you can just drop it off at the weed shed, right?
Yeah, or else drop it off at the weed shed. Yeah, likely.
Got through all your budgets?
If you happen to be watching.
I feel like I lived here.
On to item number seven, action to hire a building maintenance employee.
Um, yes, this year would be the replace the the gentleman here at the courthouse that has an injury. Um, what I'm requesting for is to hire, I will going to turn around and first pull off the list of people that we've uh that have applied to the other positions here already. Um, and if that doesn't, if I don't get candidates that that are, you know, that
Still interested.
Still interested, then I won't advertise for for that position.
So I look for a motion.
The motion would be to hire a full time employee to fill a vacancy.
I will make the motion.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries.
Am I done?
You're done.
Thank you, Steve. It's a lot of, lot of work.
You're the expert on budgets, so anybody has questions, just send them to you.
Give me another year to figure everything out.
Three years.
Oh, three, okay.
All right, so we'll move on to item number eleven, action to approve a resolution and support for First District FY twenty twenty one.
Do we need the budget review on C?
That was uh just for the budget on the monthly reports.
You don't, you're not gonna give us anything, Cindy.
Nothing special, nothing right now.
All right.
We'll review some others later.
Oh, yeah, that's sorry.
Nope.
Uh, so Todd is on, I'm guessing.
He was, but oh, see him on there now. Todd, are you there?
This is our annual resolution for continued support of the First District Association of Local Governments.
Do you want me to check and see if he wants to jump on or?
Sure.
I'll just see if he.
But he wasn't.
Is Luke on? I don't know.
Yeah.
Actually, they were up here a while back, weren't they?
Any reason why we have to listen to them?
And uh gave us their spiel and so on, right? Their reports from the year.
I just didn't know if there was something that he wanted to say since he did jump on.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution to support First District twenty one, twenty twenty one funding.
Second.
As it is given to us.
And that funding, the dues for Cottington County are based on a number of criteria. I believe census is one of those.
Population, yeah.
The total is forty three thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty four cents for fiscal year twenty twenty one, which starts October first of this year and September thirtieth of twenty twenty one.
Would you do that number one more time for me?
Forty three thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty four cents.
And this was done a number of years ago and I believe it was a ten year cycle. So that's getting probably close to they'll have to redo that, but they just had it a certain amount figured each year um going forward and then they'll reach.
This is something that is budgeted for in the commissioner's budget too.
Is it um, is this an increase over last year or is it?
It's a gradual increase each year.
Gradual ten year.
It was a ten year gradual percentage each year and all the towns and counties, towns are in this as well. It was the same thing. Um, well, I guess we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? I guess if Todd comes on, he can explain it if he wants to, if there's anything he wants to add. He may have had to jump on another call. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, that motion carries. Item number twelve, action to approve permits to discharge fireworks. We have two of them. Have them in your packet. One is for this evening and then the other one is either gonna be Friday or Saturday night of this week.
One, one is in Hazel, which is not this.
It's in Cottington County, but the um
Okay.
Landowners. Address is Hazel. It's I'm thinking it's uh down in Canpaska Township or one of those.
Okay, because it says the location of the show on that one.
Yeah, let me just check that one.
Okay.
Canpaska, Canpaska Township.
Okay, all right.
They just have a Hazel address.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a number of landlords down there that have that address.
Does it need to be? I mean, because it says the location of show is in Hazel. Hopefully the Hamline County Commissioners won't get upset if we.
No, the the street address is a Hazel address, but it's in Cotting.
Okay, okay, all right. I'm sorry. I guess I guess I'm okay. I get it. I get it. Okay.
Their mailing address.
Yeah, interesting, okay.
All right, so I would look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Gable, second by Gable. Any further discussion? Since we're both this week in the rainfall, we should be good. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Um, item number thirteen, action to approve claims for payment.
We have our credit card claims for Visa Relia Bank that always call it kind of this time of the month. Uh, the first one is for the emergency management and search and rescue. The total is seven hundred and thirty seven dollars and seventy seven cents for various supplies and fuel and travel. Uh, the second one is also Visa in the amount of two hundred and eighty four dollars and sixty one cents. And that is for the sheriff and the county jail for various supplies and travel reimbursements. Uh, the last one is Visa Relia Bank and there is a nine dollar and seventy five cent credit on the bill and that is for the sales tax that we had to pay for Zoom.
Oh, we did.
We did get a refund on that.
Making, making money.
Yep, and then the other one was a charge for the Veterans Service Office of a hundred and three dollars and thirty nine cents and that was for some federal veteran laws and regulations, the two thousand nineteen edition for Todd.
All right. We have a motion to approve these claims.
I'll move second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. How about number fourteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements?
Nothing today.
Uh, item number fifteen, action to approve personnel changes. I believe we have.
We have one that is Scott Swanson. He's the lead building maintenance at the Ag Building. He'll go to step thirteen, twenty two seventy six per hour, and this is his anniversary step increase.
Make a motion to approve.
Gable, second by Waterman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, that motion carries. Item number sixteen, action to approve travel requests. We have one of those.
One of those, and that is for our Veterans Service Officer to attend the state VSO meeting um later this summer.
So moved.
Second by Gable, second by Mandusen. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Number seventeen, I guess we probably don't have much of that happening. Um, item number eighteen, all business. Anyone have any? All right, item number nineteen, any new business?
I'm gonna pass around um a report that we will, it'll be at a future meeting. The treasurer is preparing her annual cancellation of checks that have not been cashed. And she's asking that each of you take one of those reports and look it over to see if there's someone you recognize on the list that you recognize on the list that we may be able to contact. She's contacted everyone she can. Um there is one on there that she has already, she has already taken care of that.
That one's good.
Yeah, she's, yep.
All right.
So that'll come at a later meeting. They should just want you to review the list for now for future, for a future meeting.
That's a lot easier to do it now.
Yes, that did then before we get a resolution prepared that has all these names on them that we could still contact, so.
These people, if you recognize somebody on the list, then they should get a hold of you.
Talk to Carol. Talk to the treasurer's office, yep.
Treasurer's office, okay.
Yep.
All right. Um, so that was under new business, basically. Any other new business? I mean, how about for the open?
Um, I do have something.
Yeah, I have something.
Today, um there we go. Today, um myself, the facilities manager, the sheriff and the highway superintendent will be meeting with a representative from Safety Benefits. Um, he's a loss control representative. Um, he's a loss control representative, and we are going to be reviewing a loss control survey, he comes in and he, he exam, he, uh, surveys our buildings, he checks our, our manual, do we have a safety manual, do we do these type of things? Um, and that, just, Steve and I will be meeting with him at one o'clock in this office, if there's any of you that wants to sit in on it and see what it's about, you're welcome to visit, but it is, and, um, it's a condition of our, um, membership with South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and the South Dakota Municipal League Workman's Comp Fund. Um, and we do get a credit on our billing if we comply with, if we're in compliance with a number of things, so that happens today.
Also, then at, at convention in the fall, there's recognition for some of those individuals.
Yes, um.
Do we get those either gold, silver?
Gold, silver, bronze awards, yes.
We get those as well.
I have, uh, one thing here, I got an email from, um, Great Plains Lutheran. It says, uh, plans, says county commissioners, plans for our facility expansion in Great Plains Lutheran High School. I progressing our board of directors, approved the recommendation of our building committee, and is recommending to our delegates that we move forward with two of the four components of our expansion plan, our delegates will act on this recommendation on Wednesday, July twenty-second. With our plans moving forward, a groundbreaking has been scheduled for Saturday, July twenty-fifth at seven PM, that's a Saturday, July twenty-fifth. This may not be the most convenient time for you, but we scheduled the groundbreaking in conjunction with our twenty twenty graduation gathering, and there will be fireworks if you are around at dusk. Your support is a key factor in our ability to move forward with this project, and we want to invite you to this groundbreaking event. If one of you would like to say a few words, we would welcome that too. Uh, we're thinking a minute or so, please let me know if someone is, uh, interested in speaking. The plan is for the groundbreaking to take place just outside the gymnasium entrance, thank you, uh, Pastor Dave, and, um, I, yeah, uh, with the board's permission, I would do that, I've been involved at Great Plains for many years, since day one, I guess, so. Um, in terms of, uh, uh, helping them raise dollars and, and, uh, helping them with, uh, uh, certification with the state in South Dakota for the school, and, and, uh, I, I would do that if it's, if that's the board's, uh, wishes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, I think we probably all got the email, I believe. I don't have a problem with it, it's great.
So I will go, I'll note, I'll, uh, notify Pastor Dave and let him know that I'll hold it for thirty seconds.
I'm unavailable, so. Lee, where you gonna go?
I might, I might be there if there's a discussion.
I'll probably be there too, so I might have.
Okay, we got a call, or, so we're making an announcement to the public, there could be a call of commissioners at that event on Saturday night, the groundbreaking, so it will be okay now. Alright, anything else for the open? Alright, um, I, item number twenty-one, I do not have a need for an executive session, Natalie, do you have anything, anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Johnson to adjourn, do we?
Sorry.
Second by Waterman, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, you're adjourned.
Cindy, how soon do you have to know about the state convention, I'm not so sure I'm gonna go, I, you know.
Well, we need to pay the, we need to pay the registration when we pay.